Welcome to the zoning meeting. Please silence all cell phones and note that this meeting is being taped by FCTV. Any private party recording this hearing, if so, please step up to the podium and request permission. I'll introduce the staff tonight. On my right, we have Mark Fineran. On my closest right is Frank Duffy, clerk. I'm Suzanne Murphy, Chair. This is James Moss, Vice Chair. Tony Petrucci, who will be serving as a member tonight, voting member. And our new member, Nick Haney. And our Noreen Stockman, our zoning administrator, and Ashley DeMello, our office assistant. The Zoning Board of Appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statutes as well as the town zoning bylaws in reviewing and voting on this application. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and the public and to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to the closing of the hearing process and reaching a decision. Number one, to begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement for the hearing and read pertinent information from the file. Number two, the applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation, but the time may be extended by a vote of the board. Three, the board will then question the applicant. Four, next, the public will be invited to comment. Comments should be limited to two minutes and be strictly related to the proposal. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair and should come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record. Please speak into the microphone and it will amplify your voice and record audio for the FCTV viewers. Any person seeking to make a public statement on anything that's not on our agenda tonight, you can have two minutes to speak today, but the board will not comment. And that's what I have. Does anybody from the public have a comment to make to the board? No hands are up? All right, so we'll start. We have no continuations. We have a brand-new hearing. 073-241-35 Little Neck Bar Road.
Oh, really?
Go for it, Frank.
So this is application number 07324, Jane P. Kennedy, 25 Birch Road, Darien, Connecticut. The Slides to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Section 240 10.2A of the Code of Falmouth to alter existing decks, construct additions to the first floor, and construct an addition above the garage creating habitable space. The subject property is 135 Little Neck Bars Road in West Falmouth, Massachusetts. We have referral comments from engineering. They're concerned about stormwater runoff, want it contained. The Board of Health has reported that the septic system is suitable for a four-bedroom house. Conservation Commission's informed us that they have issued an order of condition for the work on July 31, 2024, and the water department would like the service upgraded to one inch.
And no letters?
No letters on this one.
And that's what we have. Take it away, Kevin.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Madam Board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney here in town with Amen Clower Law Firm. And I'm before you tonight representing the applicant, Jane Kennedy, the owner of Little Neck Bar Road. I always mess this up. I always say Little Bar Neck Road. It's Little Neck Bars Road. I will probably mess it up again. I'm joined tonight by the architect Greg Saronian of ResCom Architecture. Though not here with us, the engineer on this project is Tim Santos of Merrill Engineering. The applicant seeking permission to alter the existing nonconforming dwelling on this property, 135 Little Neck Bars Road, is located in West Falmouth in the Black Beach Hills neighborhood. This particular lot is 35,700 square feet. It's in Residential B zoning district, and it is in the AE18 flood zone. Presently, there's a four-bedroom, single-family dwelling, footprint of 3,259 square feet. The existing dwelling is nonconforming to front yard setback, being 21.1 feet where 25 is required. It is otherwise conforming to all setback and lock coverage requirements. Lock coverage by structure is only 9.1%, and lock coverage by structures paving and parking is 16.8%. The applicant's proposing relatively modest additions. There was a second-floor addition, that's the most sizable, over the existing garage. Beyond that, there's minor adjustments to the first-floor footprint. There'll be an expansion of the first-floor mudroom, and a new entry deck, and an expansion of the deck on the southern side of the home. These are not significant changes to the footprint. They're actually kind of horse trading. They're removing some existing decks, proposing some new decks. The lock coverage by structure remains actually 9.1%. Because of that horse trading, we end up with an increase of only five square feet. And though we're adding a bedroom above the garage, there is no increase in the net number of bedrooms as the existing den, which meets the definition of a bedroom, is being eliminated. The existing nonconforming setback is unaffected. There's no new nonconformities created here. Lot coverage requirements remain well below the allowable thresholds. Lock coverage by structure, as I said, remains 9.1%, where up to 20 is allowed. And lock coverage by structures paving and parking remains at 16.8%, where up to 40% is allowed. However, due to that existing nonconforming front yard setback, we do require a special permit pursuant to 240 10.2A. That section of the bylaw states that pre-existing nonconforming structures may be changed by special permit, provided that this board finds they're not substantially more detrimental than what exists. You're asked to consider the standards of 240 12.1E, whether or not the alteration creates any new dimensional nonconformities, compares views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. Here, there are new nonconformities created. The existing nonconforming setback is unaffected. Though the proposed house is increased in habitable space, there's no change to lot coverage by structures or lot coverage by structures paving and parking, which again remain well below the allowable thresholds. This home's designed to be in character with the neighborhood. I believe it is fair to say that it's very much in style with nearby properties. This proposal has already received the approval of the Conservation Commission. An order of conditions has been issued. I believe you have it in your file. This project, as proposed, is an improvement over the existing conditions. For the applicants, it increases their usable space, and there's nothing about this proposal that is substantially more detrimental than what currently exists. I believe that this meets all the requirements of 240 12.2A and 240 12.1E. For these reasons, I would ask that you grant the special permit, and I'll be happy to address any questions that you, the public, may have at this time.
Mark, you want to start off?
No, it's pretty straightforward. It's almost like one of those, "God, how come they didn't do this 15 years ago?" Things. I have no questions. Pretty straightforward.
No, I have no questions. Although I'll comment, this is kind of hard to find this property, but...
If you're not...
Come with me, Frank. We could've walked.
If you're not familiar with it back there, it can be kind of tricky, but the easiest way to do it is come off the bike path.
Well, yeah, I figured that out when I was in my car, so anyways. Okay. No, I have no further questions. It's been done.
Kevin, I mean, yeah, is the first-floor bedroom that you're eliminating the mudroom?
No. If you look at the existing floor plans way down, there is a den, and that den meets the definition of a bedroom under Title V regulations. So that room is no longer existing. That floor plan's been changed to be a much more roving concept with the living room.
Oh, so it's just gone and...
Yep.
All right, okay. That's all I have. You have anything, Jim?
AE18 flood zone?
Yes.
Okay. The proposed ridge height is 22 feet, seven and a quarter inches.
Yeah, that is the new roofed garage, yep. And that matches the existing ridge height.
I too. It's a lot easier to walk through the bike path through that pesky gate that's rather contentious.
We're not going to talk about that one.
No. If there's anyone in the neighborhood who was like, "Who is this guy with a plug?" That was me.
Yep.
No, this is a very nice-looking project, so thank you.
I think it fits very well in the community. I was going to ask about reason, but that's been answered. As far as this den is concerned, how does it no longer...
So if you look at the proposed... Be with me. So this is where the den was, right here.
Okay, that's great.
That's now been opened up into a much more open concept, living room, kitchen.
Thank you. Thank you. No more questions.
Nick, do you have anything?
I do not.
No? Anybody have any other questions before I go to the public? No, sir? Anybody from the public have any questions on this project? Well, Kevin...
I'm always relieved when there's a crowd. It's not for me.
Isn't that a beautiful thing? All right, we have everything we need up here. We have the Concom order of conditions. Well, we don't have it, but we know there was one issue.
I actually have a copy if you'd like it for your file.
Oh, do you have one?
Yep.
Yeah, that would be good to have in the pile. When I went yesterday, it wasn't in there, unless it's come today. Okay, great, thanks. And so I think, you have any...
Say, Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion to close.
Second?
I have a motion to close and a second? Any discussion?
Ashley's got it set. Check it on that.
Nice.
Very efficient.
All those in favor of closing?
Aye.
Aye.
So we'll do findings?
I'll make a motion to approve with conditions.
Findings?
No, he's not. We need a second first?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Now we can do findings?
We're in discussion?
Any discussion, yes. I have none.
I have none. All right. Property is 135 Little Neck Bar Road. It's an RB zoning district. It's in a district of critical planning concern and windblown debris district. AC AE18 flood zone. Street frontage is 64.51 feet where 100 is required. The current lot coverage by structure is 9.1, and it will remain the same. Current lot coverage by structure, parking and paving, is 16.8. It will remain the same. The nonconformity here is the setback from the street, which is 21.1 feet where 25 is required. We have comments, referral from engineering, which I think I reported earlier when I read the notice. And we have a determination that the, under 240 12.1E, that the adequacy of the site for the proposed use, suitable, the site is suitable for the proposed use. There appears to be no impact on traffic flow and safety. There appears to be no impact on neighborhood visual character, views and vistas, and there's adequate sewage disposal, as confirmed by the Board of Health. And utilities is available and will have no impact on affordable housing.
I just have two things to add. It's a private road.
All right, it is a private road.
And the lot size is 35,700?
It's a 40,000-foot district.
You have anything else?
Ridge height of the garage, the proposed addition of the garage, is 22 feet, seven and one-quarter inches. It should not have any impact on use, just as shade of neighbors. Property is not in a coastal pond overlay district. No opposition at the hearing. I don't believe any in the file.
No.
No one speaking in favor. Concom has issued its order of conditions. While there is an increase in ridge height, it is de minimis. Drywalls are proposed on the plans. But so everything else?
Sounds good. Everybody all set to vote?
We'll do conditions.
Oh, conditions first. Forgot about those. The important ones: all town boards.
Per plans.
Per plans. Work hours.
Property remain four bedrooms. Updated water service is recommended for...
Yep.
I think we have to worry about traffic.
Any other conditions we can think of? No. No. I don't think they'll need any police help down the end of that road, even while the bike path says so. Sometimes people park, but you know, I know. All set, everybody?
Oh, sorry, one other. The only reason for the special permit is the nonconformity as to front yard setback.
Front setback, yep. I think we've wrapped it up. And we have all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None?
Thank you very much for your time. Greatly appreciated, and wish you luck with the rest of the night.
All right, next, we have 214 Gifford Street.
This is application 07424, Anthony Fantasia, 333 Monomoskoye Road, Mashpee, Massachusetts. He's applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for modification of a special permit, number 8-96, which was issued in 1996 by the Zoning Board of Appeals pursuant... He's asking for relief pursuant to Section 240 10.2A 1 of the Code of Falmouth to remove the existing three-family structure and replace it with a new structure with three units. The subject property is at 214 Gifford Street in Falmouth, Massachusetts. We have referral comments from engineering with concerns about a driveway permit and the usual comments about stormwater to be contained on-site with an erosion control. The Board of Health has advised us that a septic system for nine bedrooms is required. And then the property has no water service, so it's going to be necessary to extend the water service from Ambus Avenue over to this property to serve it. There is one letter in the file from a butler on Hamlin Avenue who's not particularly concerned, not objecting to the project, but has some specific concerns, which we will discuss with the applicant.
Madam Chair? Before we even get started, we have a staking policy. I mean, we're supposed to check every one of these properties out. We hold every applicant that comes in here to our standards. And this offends me. This property is completely inaccessible.
I couldn't get in.
There is what used to be a driveway. I mean, I have an all-wheel-drive vehicle. I drove down 50 or 60 feet to the end of the dumpster. I mean, why become, before this board, with something that we can't access, we can't look at? I think it's completely inconsiderate of the applicant. At the very least, they should have bush hogged a path through for us to see what we're talking about, and the property is completely inaccessible. How did you expect us to look at this?
So let me stop by apologizing for that. You are 100% correct. I did not, it's 100% my ignorance, I did not understand the process that you would be going to the property prior to this. And that's 100% on me, and I did not mean to waste anyone's time, and I understand that you're offended, and I don't blame you. I feel kind of dumb standing here now that you said that. I did not understand that you needed to walk the property prior to this meeting, and I'm sure that that is something that, somewhere along the line, I misunderstood, and I apologize to the board and everybody else. I'm certainly not trying to waste anyone's time and did not...
Well, I mean, we really need to access it, so I think you really need to continue this until we can do what we do to everyone else that comes in front of us.
And I'm not trying to cut you off. That's 100% on me, and I do apologize to everyone in here. I am sorry. So could we...
I even tried to go around Hamlin and thought maybe it's a way I can get in that way.
But I know that neighborhood, and there's no way you're sneaking in anywhere there.
I didn't want to bother that house that's right there.
I actually made two efforts, too. But I mean, so should we, if we continue this, how... Sure, I'm doing the chairman's job. I'm sorry.
What are you looking for from the applicant as far as accessibility goes?
Oh, I mean, there's a building down there that exists that wants to be torn down. I mean, there's another proposed building, which you should stake the corners. I mean, at a bare minimum, anything we ask anyone else. I mean, it's like a jungle down there.
The reason why I'm asking is because you periodically also will get lots that are undeveloped, right? And you don't specifically ask people, or there's not direction for people to know to clear a path or something. So I think it's just...
I've been here two years, and I don't think I've ever had anybody... I mean, people are looking to build something. I mean, most often, it's something that already has something existing, as this does. We can't even get to what's existing. I mean, we need to see what we're talking about. We need to see...
Madam Chair, I should... I mean, I just suggest something. I drove by it three times. There's no way I could stop on the road itself. There's no way I could pull into it as we just discussed. So if this board is to continue it with the idea of getting access to the lot, obviously both sides of the entryway, because I could do it, need to be clearly staked. I have a regular car. I don't have a four-wheel drive. I have real... You can't park in the street. There's going to be some way of pulling into the lot. However, that is done, and that's up to you to do that, to get us in there.
Okay.
I don't mind walking down there, but I also don't want to have to bring a brush cutter in to do it.
Nope, that's understandable.
So just clear the way down. Because some of what we're... Well, I'll stop there.
What I, Madam Chairman, to the applicant, the lot lines need to be clearly delineated and staked out. The scope of the work, where the new building is going to be, needs to be clearly staked out, as well as the setbacks to the lot line from the corners of the building, or anything that's going to be protruding out. We need to be able to have a clear reference about what you're putting in, where it is, the size, the dimensions of it, and so on. There were some comments as well, Madam Chairman, about a wall. I think that needs to be very clearly delineated, where this wall is going to be going, and I would suggest speaking to the zoning administrator to submit some additional information about how big this wall is going to be and so on, because I think a butler might not want to suddenly find a wall.
Right.
There's clearly a difference between something that might be a little, you know, a two- or three-foot retaining wall versus a seven- or eight- or nine-foot retaining wall. So I think that information should be supplemented to the filing.
Can I just ask another question? So if there's access, if there's parking, access to where the new structure's going, there will be access to the existing structure. It will all be staked?
Well, I'm not going to speak for the rest of the board. This is a demolition, so I don't necessarily need to see...
Okay.
There's a sheet in your application that tells you what we're looking for.
Okay.
A staking policy sheet. It's got some red lettering, I believe. I mean, and you do that however you can, and, you know, we understand. You don't have to...
Okay.
But I mean, you're going to have to look.
No, I completely agree. I completely agree.
We go usually at different times. Once in a while, we'll run into each other, but usually we all go separately.
Right.
So it's only, you know, we need to just be able to pull...
No, I completely understand. You're absolutely 100% right, and I do apologize. So if we could get it continued, we could take care of that.
So is that a motion you've made, Mark, to continue?
Yes, I could, yeah.
Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Second from Brandon, October 10?
That's plenty of time.
So we have a motion and a second to continue?
Through you, Madam Chairman. Do we need an extension, or are we still within timelines? Okay, thank you, Madam Chairman.
We have a motion and a second for continuation until October 10 at 6:00. All set? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None?
All right, thank you, and I apologize if I wasted anybody's time.
Next, we have 60 Frederick.
Oh, I don't know.
Yeah, I heard those people saying they lived on Hamlin.
Okay, we have application 07524, Ted Dirker, P.O. Box 454, West Falmouth, Massachusetts. Applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Section 240-9.1 and 240-11.4A 1, subletter I, of the Code of Falmouth to construct an attached accessory apartment in the front yard located more than 50 feet from the front property line. The subject property is 60 Frederick Road, West Falmouth, Massachusetts. We have comments from engineering who's concerned about stormwater and erosion control. The Board of Health says a septic system is for 10 bedrooms. Is it 10 bedrooms?
Proposed. It's a proposed...
Proposed, right. Is required. No conservation. There's no water service, so it's necessary to extend the water main or provide well water. And there's Planning Board Site Plan Review, which approved it on July 10, 2024, with conditions. There are no letters.
Good evening. My name's Jeff Nickerson. I'm an attorney here in town. I'm here on behalf of the Dirker family, the owners of this property. The title to this property is in Cape Cod Beach House LLC. Christian Dirker and his dad Ted are managers of the LLC. I believe is Ted here tonight? Yes, Ted. Also here this evening is Mike Duffany, who's the builder for the project, and Jerry Dora, the architect for the project. We're here tonight to request a special permit pursuant to 240 9.1E 2 to construct a detached accessory structure with two bedrooms on this 5.09-acre lot. This lot's in a Residence B zoning district, and we're also asking for a special permit under 240 11.4 to construct this apartment within the front yard setback of the existing dwelling. So according to Section 9.1 of our bylaw, the detached accessory apartment is allowed by special permit of the zoning board, provided that the site plan review and design review are approved by planning. That was approved on July 10. I believe a copy is in the file for the board. And of course, the special permit standard that we have here in town is that the proposed use cannot have more adverse effects that overbalance the beneficial effects on the neighborhood of the town in view of the particular characteristics of the site. I guess I would say, to begin, this is a pretty large site. It's 5.09 acres, which is sizable in our town. And if board members were able to go out and visit the site, I believe you probably saw that it's pretty well vegetated. It's at the end of a dead-end road up on Frederick Road. And we believe that the site is more than adequate to support the existing six-bedroom dwelling and the additional two-bedroom accessory apartment. We believe the accessory apartment is going to be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the bylaw, and that the proposed dwelling is going to meet all criteria for a special permit under the bylaw. As I mentioned, the property's in West Falmouth on Frederick Road in the Residence B zoning district. The lot is 5.09 acres. There's 105 feet of frontage on Frederick Road, which is a private way, the frontage being down at this point. The width of the lot is well in excess of the 125-foot minimum required. The existing house, which is shown on this detail of the plan in black and white, was built in 1991 with an attached garage with six existing bedrooms. There's an existing pool, which is between the existing house and the proposed accessory structure, and there's also an existing tennis court. For those who made it out to the site, I hope that you saw that from Frederick Road, it's pretty hard to discern that there's really a house back there. It's pretty well vegetated, and it's the expectation and the plan for the existing and the proposed accessory structure to also be pretty well screened by the existing vegetation, which is going to remain. The existing accessory apartment is going to be, as shown on this detail, in brown. It'll be constructed to the south of the existing dwelling. It will contain two bedrooms, a living room, kitchen, and bathrooms. Driveway access to the new proposed accessory dwelling is going to be off the existing driveway. The proposed driveway for the accessory dwelling is going to be gravel. It will provide access right to the accessory structure. Wastewater is going to be managed through the construction of a new 10-bedroom septic system. Pull out here. You can see that that will be located to the east of the accessory structure. The property is in neither a coastal pond overlay district nor a water resource protection district, and the health agent has indicated that based on his review, the proposed 10-bedroom system is suitable for the project. The utilities for the proposed accessory structure are going to be fed off the existing structure. It's going to go to the west of the pool, underground. The well water, there's an existing well just to the east of the existing structure, is going to be used to serve the proposed structure as well. There's no new water service proposed in the street. The accessory apartment is going to meet all dimensional requirements of the zoning bylaw, and it will exceed the zoning setbacks on this five-acre site. The... Give you a look at the detail here. The proposed structure is going to be 203 feet away from Frederick Road. The side yard setback is 253 feet to the west and 155 to the east. The closest structure to the sideline is 108 feet for the existing structure's garage. If I may, I'll show you the elevations for the plan. And so this is the proposed accessory structure. When you pull into the accessory structure from the new driveway, the east elevation is what you'll see. There's a garage on the lower level, and there's also parking as a carport underneath the deck to the south of the structure. the deck to the south of the structure. There is access from the ground level to the second floor, which is where the residence is, by this set of outside stairs. This is the south elevation, which you would see if the vegetation weren't so mature as you come in over the driveway area. The north elevation, so if you're in the existing structure and you're looking south, you would see this from the existing structure. And the west, again, it's pretty hard to get an idea of what it would look like from the west because of the topography of the site and the vegetation, but this would be the west elevation. The height of the proposed accessory structure is 22 feet at its maximum above existing grade, and the structure is going to have two bedrooms. If I go up to the floor plan here, you can see the bedrooms. So on the ground floor, as I mentioned, there will be a drive-in garage. The ground floor is also going to have a storage area and a mechanical laundry room. The finished second floor, as you'll notice, has no interior access to the lower level. The only access to the dwelling is, again, through the set of stairs, which is exterior. And the living area is on the second floor, consisting of two bedrooms, two bathrooms, a kitchen, and a sitting area. There is a deck which is going to wrap around most of the structure, which will provide the opportunity to sit outside and enjoy some of the solitude and quietness that's provided by the vegetation that's out there. The proposal, again, was reviewed by the planning board for design review, which concluded that the architectural aspects of the proposed structure are consistent with the standards in the bylaw. It's intended to have wood-clad or wood-appearance exterior, consistent with the existing structure, which is a wood-shankled building. Vegetative clearing, of course, will be undertaken as necessary to permit the construction. Remaining vegetation is going to screen the improvements viewed from Frederick Road and from the adjacent property, which is immediately to the south, which is also owned by another member of the Dirker family. Back to the site plan, if I may. As I mentioned, the lot is over five acres in size. The primary residence is going to be owner-occupied by Ted Dirker, who is the manager of the LLC, as required by 240-9.1. It also meets other requirements of 240-9.1 for the board's consideration. The accessory structure is intended for family and friends' use, not for rental use. The accessory apartment's going to have two bedrooms and 799 square feet of habitable space, which is below the 800-foot maximum, and it will have 26% of the floor area of the existing dwelling. The limit in our bylaw is 40%. The footprint of the new accessory structure, as required by the bylaw, is much less than that of the existing structure. The existing structure's footprint is 4,683 square feet, and the new structure, including decks, has a footprint of 1,866 square feet. As I mentioned, it is not in a water resource protection district or coastal pond overlay district. So we hope that the board will conclude that the proposal meets all the requirements for the board to issue a special permit, as this accessory apartment is not going to have adverse effects that overbalance the beneficial effects on either the neighborhood or the town in view of the particular characteristics of the site. Again, it's well screened on five acres. The site is suitable for an accessory apartment. There's no significant impact on traffic flow and safety. There's only the addition of one additional dwelling. Neighborhood views and vistas will not be affected. Again, well-maintained and screened area. Wastewater treatment is going to be on-site through the new proposed system. Utilities are adequate, and they're going to be fed from the existing dwelling. Accessory apartment won't have a direct effect on the supply of affordable housing in town, but it will permit a more full use of the property by the Dirker family by reducing their need for off-site housing when they're in residence. I should point out again that the planning board voted site plan and design review approval. And the other relief that we're requesting tonight is a special permit to locate the accessory structure within the front yard setback of the existing structure. Under 240-11.4, our front yard setback is 25 feet. Again, we have more than enough setback as designed, but because this is technically in the front yard of the existing structure, we must ask for a special permit to allow that structure to be constructed in the location where it is sited. I would point out that it's well in excess of 50 feet from the layout of Frederick Road at 203 feet distant from Frederick Road. And for the reasons cited above, we believe that this special permit is also one that the board should grant. Setback properly, there's no adverse effects on the neighborhood, views and vistas will be maintained, adequate wastewater, utilities are adequate, and site plan approval has been granted. We believe this proposal meets all requirements of the bylaw for both special permit requests. We think that it's going to be a nice addition to the family's property, that it would be consistent with the town's accessory apartment bylaw, and it will really allow the family to use the site more fully when they are in residence. So I'd ask the board to vote to grant these two special permits, as described and shown, and I'd be happy to try to address any questions the board might have.
Thanks. Tony, how about I sat down this end?
Sure. Well, it certainly fits into the community. It's under 800 square feet. Just to confirm, the ridge on the ADU is 22 feet?
Yes, above existing grade.
All right. And there are six pre-existing bedrooms in the primary residence and two in the new, so that's all confirmed.
Correct.
I have no other questions.
Thank you.
Jim?
No, I have no questions. Thank you.
You answered my only one. I wasn't sure if the water was coming off the well or you answered that, so this is what ADUs are for, right here. This is textbook, if you ask me. Frank, do you have anything?
No, I think Jeff has answered most of the questions I had in his presentation, so thank you.
I have...I mean, if these guys can't do it, nobody can. It's all good, nice.
Guys all set up here before I go to the public? Nick, do you have any questions?
I do not.
All set? Anybody from the public have any questions? Public's quiet tonight, shy. So I guess you're all set up here, right?
Motion to close.
Second.
We have a motion to close and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Well, this is a pretty good one here, if you ask me.
I'll make a motion to approve with conditions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? And we'll do findings?
Okay. Property 6060 Frederick Road in West Falmouth, Massachusetts. Zoning district is RB. There's no applicable overlay district and no previous zoning board of appeals decisions reported. The lot is 21,623 square feet, where 40,000 is required. That's approximately five acres, according to the...
210. Not 21,000, 210,000.
221,000.
Oh, you said 21,000.
221,623 square feet. The lot. The street frontage is 105.64 feet, where 100 feet is required. It's a private road. Lot coverage by structure existing, 2.1%, will increase to 3.0%. The limit is 20. Lot coverage by structure, parking, and paving is 8.1%, will increase to 9.2%. The limit is 40. The existing house has six bedrooms. It's currently owner-occupied and will remain owner-occupied. There are six...there will be two bedrooms in the accessory apartment. The accessory apartment will be set back 203 feet from Frederick Road. The height of the structure will be 22 feet. There was planning board...did you say site plan review or design review?
Both.
Both?
Yes.
Okay. On record, the square footage of the...total square footage of the...
ADU.
ADU is 26%, where the limit is 40%. The owner has represented that he will occupy the primary residence, and the ADU will be used primarily for family and guests and is not intended to be used for rental purposes. And I read the referral comments in before. So we have a situation where we have to make findings under 240-9.1, which is the accessory apartment, as well as the 240-11.4A1I for the accessory structure in the front yard. So we have lot size, which has been determined to be adequate. The owner occupies the principal dwelling. There's no coastal pond overlay districts or water resource protection districts to be concerned with. The planning board has issued a site plan review and design review. They've imposed some conditions, which are on the record. There appears to be adequate parking. There's been no representation of adverse effect on the neighborhood, no apparent traffic issues. Utilities have been provided. The project, the ADU, will not have any impact on affordable housing, and it is set back 203 feet from Frederick Road, where the bylaw requires 50 feet.
Very good.
Yeah. That was an A+ Frank.
Yeah. Very proud of you.
Yeah. So...
I got a few more.
You have a couple more, huh?
Project is not more detrimental. No impact...did I miss that? My apologies. No impact of views and vistas. Septic is adequate, according to the referral, for up to 10 bedrooms. No public opposition in the file or offered at the hearing. I think that's all I got. Thank you.
Yep. And conditions?
Per plans, per planning board decision. Per the water referral testimony was that they planned to hook up to the well. Assessor requests inspection prior to a certificate of occupancy. All engineering referrals. Why don't we just list it as comply with ADU bylaw concerning owner occupancy?
And hours of op? You know, construction hours. Anything else you can think of for conditions? No need? Can you think of anything? We're in good shape. Oh, we'll take a vote. We had an approve with conditions and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good. Thank you. Great job. Thank you. Great, and we have 07624 O'Brien, 96 Silver Beach Ave.
Okay, this is application 07624, Jean M. O'Brien trustee, 215 Dedham Street in Canton, Massachusetts, applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to section 240-10.2A and 240-11.3A4 of the Code of Falmouth to remove the existing deck and construct in addition to the existing non-conforming single-family dwelling, increasing lot coverage by structure. The subject property is 96 Silver Beach Avenue, North Falmouth, Massachusetts. We have comments, referral comments from engineering concerned about stormwater and erosion control, which are their usual concerns. The property is on the sewer, and the number of bedrooms complies with the sewer bylaw. Conservation commission has no reported concerns, and we have no letters either in favor or against on record.
Hey, good way.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, attorney Christopher Corain with the firm of Dunning and Corain &amp; Mashby. With me tonight is Robert Duar of Bracket Engineering, the engineer for the project, as well as Joel Jincada, who is the contractor, and as well as the O'Brien family who are with me tonight. They are the owners of the property located at 96 Silver Beach Avenue in Falmouth. So we are seeking a special permit under 240-10.2A to alter or extend a pre-existing non-conforming single-family structure. We're also seeking a special permit under 240-11.3A to increase lot coverage above 20%. This property is located within the residential C zoning district and the coastal pond overlay district. This lot is also located within the AE15 flood zone. In the residential C zoning district, you have a minimum square lot area requirement of 40,000 square feet, minimum frontage of 100 feet, 25-foot front yard setback, 10-foot side and rear yard setback requirements, and a 20% lot coverage max. The existing structure has the following nonconformities. We only have 7,566 square feet of lot area, which is a non-conforming condition. There is only 82.5 feet of frontage, which is a non-conforming condition. The front yard setback is 2.4 feet, which is non-conforming. The east side yard setback is 2.2, and lot coverage is currently non-conforming at 22.4%. What the applicants are proposing is a approximately 323 square foot addition in the southwest corner of the house. The request for lot coverage is to increase it from 22.4% existing to 22.7%, which equates to about a 20-square-foot increase in lot coverage of structures. The addition itself will conform to all of your setback criteria, so it conforms to your rear yard setback, conforms to both your side yard setbacks, and conforms to your front yard setback. We are not increasing or intensifying the existing side yard or front yard setback. And again, the only thing that we're increasing as far as nonconformities is lot coverage. And I would note that while we are increasing or asking to increase the lot coverage from 22.4 to 22.7, we are actually reducing coverage of structures, parking, and paving by approximately 161 square feet from 35.8% to 33.7%. So again, while we're asking to increase lot coverage, overall coverage of everything, we are reducing. The height of the existing structure is 18 feet 9 inches. The new structure...the addition will be at 19 feet 8 inches, so we're less than a foot above what's existing, so it shouldn't have any impacts on views or vistas. Again, we're not creating any new nonconformities. We're not intensifying any existing, other than lot coverage, which we've asked for. And I would also suggest this is consistent with redeveloping the neighborhood. I would point the board's attention to 105 Silver Beach, which is right down the street, which is new construction. And I know that with the application, there was a lot coverage analysis done that showed that it was consistent with surrounding neighborhood. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have. We are going from a two- to three-bedroom, but again, this is on town sewer. So again, myself or Rob, if you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Thank you. Mark, you want to start off?
Yeah, no, no real questions, but in your...just for the next time.
Yes.
There is one I haven't seen you for. In your application, there's a staking policy, and I mean, you used the little, like, dig safe flags with...it's a staking policy. We like stakes. I mean, most of it was staked, but the addition had the flag.
Okay.
I mean, it was readily discernible where it was, and I'm not going to hem you up, but I mean, it's right in the application.
No, absolutely.
And again, I would note that, you know, where the addition is going is basically existing
deck area.
Yeah.
No, we're not...I completely understand.
Nothing else? Frank?
If you're standing on the street looking at the property, on the left-hand side, there's a deck right up to the property line. Is that being removed? Did I understand that?
Yes, that is correct.
So there'll be...how many feet will be left at 10 feet?
It will then go to 7.7, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's why we have an overall reduction in structures, paving, and parking.
Okay, I understand that. Thank you very much. Other than that, I think I understand this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, this looks like another good project. Me, I have no questions. Do you have anything, Jim?
Nothing substantial about the project. It's, I think, very much keeping in the neighborhood a nice...one nitpicky thing, your submission today is dated today's date.
Yeah.
Our rule requires submission seven days in advance and normally triggers a continuance.
Okay.
I don't think there's anything in there other than what was covered in your oral presentation, which is fine, but going forward...
No, I appreciate that.
I'm going to be nitpicky as a fellow attorney about submissions.
I appreciate that. That just, you know, I don't obviously come before this board a lot, and as you say, I usually just give that more as guidance as opposed to new information.
And that's why I'm not really upset about it. It just puts into writing, I think, everything you just covered.
Right, exactly.
Which are very, very clear from the file, so...
It did have a change, like, in the plan or something.
That would be...yeah, that would have...
Absolutely, I completely agree. As I say, I just try to provide it as kind of a backup to what I'm presenting before the board.
Not in Mashpee anymore, huh?
I know, apparently not.
You went up to the line, you stepped over.
Right.
The neighborhood is definitely in transition. This fits in well. I have no questions.
Thank you.
Nick, you have any questions? All set up here for questions?
I'm good to go.
The public have any questions? Come on, grill them. Go for it.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Second. We have a motion to close and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None?
Motion to approve with conditions.
I'll second.
Motion to approve with conditions. So we'll start off with findings.
Property's 96 Silver Beach Avenue in North Falmouth. It's in an RC zoning district. It's in a coastal pond overlay district and a wind-blown debris district, AE flood zone. The lot size is point is, excuse me, 7,566 square feet, where 40,000 is actually... Is, excuse me, 7,566 square feet, where 40,000 is actually required, but it's nevertheless a billable lot, because it's built upon, I guess. Street frontage is 82.5, where 100 is required. That's a nonconformity. It's a public right-of-way. Current lot coverage by structure is 22.4%. It will increase minimally to 22.7%, where the limit is 20, so that's a nonconformity covered by the special permit. Lot coverage by structure, parking, and paving is 35.8, which will actually be reduced to 33.7. The limit is 40%. The setbacks are all kind of small here. The front setback is 2.4 from the street, side is 2.2, and there'll... According to representation of the applicant, there'll be no further... Actually, it'll be reduced, because on one side, you're getting rid of that deck.
It's going to 7... 7 point... 7 feet 7 inches.
Seven.
So reduction of the nonconformity.
Reducing that nonconformity. The addition proposed is 323 square feet. We have comments from engineering, which I read at the beginning. Sewer... It's on the sewer. Conservation said it was okay. They had no concerns. We're making find... We're asked to make findings that this is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure. The attic... The site is adequate for the proposed use. The site is suitable for the proposed use. There's no apparent impact on traffic flow and safety, no impact, no apparent impact on neighborhood visual character, views, and vistas. It is on the sewer. Utilities are provided, and this will have no effect on the supply of affordable housing.
Nice. I only have a couple to add. The height is 19.8. It's only going up a teeny bit. There is an order of conditions from Conservation Commission. The water line has to be done. That was in the...
That come in afterwards? Okay.
That's conditions, I guess.
Conditions, right.
And I think that's all I have. Jim?
Nope, nothing else. Thank you.
Any other findings? All set on findings? And move on to conditions. Oh, there is a comp sheet. We can put that in the findings. I did see one in the file. Conditions, per plan, work hours, the water line, that's per plan.
Applicants should work with the police department, because old Silver can get a little tight.
Yeah, that's true.
In terms of traffic or... A little easier this time of year, though.
Good, especially in that neighborhood. Anything else you can think of for conditions?
Per town, all town referrals.
Yeah, I think we're in good shape. So we have a motion to approve with conditions and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None.
Great, thank you so much for your time tonight. Have a great night.
Enjoy.
Thank you.
Hurry up, it might beat my record.
I know. I'm hustling here. All right, we're moving on to minutes.
We're tabled.
Tabled. And then we'll move on to zoning administrator updates.
Where we're running early, I'm going to keep it on that. So 43 needs and T-ticket. We granted administrative approval for access stairs and landing and a deck replacement. Same dimensions, 17 marlin, East Balmouth. We granted a sunroom extension. They had a nonconforming shed on the lot. This property previously had administrative approval, so we have the old lot survey that showed no shed, and now the current lot survey showed a shed, but due to the size of the shed, being over 100 square feet, it needs to be a minimum 10 feet off the lot line. So as part of the ramp, they have to put the shed in a conforming location. So we're correcting things as we go. 12 sunset. They were previously before the board for a second-floor addition to their garage for living space. They had a proximeter butter who wanted no windows. The family wanted transit windows put in, so they were able to get the... A butter who was close by to agree to their design, so we granted the change in windows. And then 35 county, we allowed a single-car garage bay, pull-out addition to an existing barn.
Busy, busy.
Yep. And that's all I have for you.
All right. For a discussion? I'll ask a question. Are we all doing the Zoom?
Yes.
I hope. Are we all doing the Zoom with George?
That's a good question. I will double-check on who he wants to have present or not.
Okay.
We're looking at September 18...
I think it said 18.
17, which is a Tuesday at 6 o'clock.
Okay.
If that works for people, so just if not RSVP.
I would like to have everyone. I mean, you don't have to if you're...
I'll double check. That may have ended up in a spamful... I didn't see that email, but I do, I will...
Yeah, it just was sent out today.
Oh, what's that?
Yeah, it came out late this September email.
Yeah, so you may not have even seen it yet.
I was stuck in Superior Court, very late.
Yeah, actually, I did. I checked my email for once this afternoon.
I didn't see it, so I just was working outside.
Whatever. I'm a slave to this job, yes, you have me.
Of course you did. Tony gets an A.
What did they do?
He responded immediately.
Naturally.
Well, yeah, I think... I just think that it's important to go. You know, you don't have to, but I would go if I didn't have to go, just because it's important, I believe. And then, do you want to tell everyone? I don't know if everyone got the email about this construction-type thing that's going before town meeting.
Right, so there are a couple of changes proposed for a town meeting this year, one of which is they are going to bring forward a noise bylaw, which has apparently been requested, and it will also include work hours, and I think that's something that this board has been focusing on for several years. Just for the board's knowledge, most communities do have posted work limit hours for constructions, and so this bylaw would essentially bring that into Falmouth, as well as have some type of responsibility for noise ordinance issues, because right now, that's not terribly clear. So there was a draft that was circulated to the board. If you have any suggestions, you're welcome to provide feedback. Apparently, it'll be for the select board at their next meeting, and then for town meeting.
This is a general bylaw, not a zoning bylaw.
Correct.
Tom, are you on top of that? Which I was truly gobsmacked, there was no...
Tony gets the Tweaky Wheel Award.
Well, I think it's important. I think, you know, we've certainly had cases with 40Bs where we've provided work hours, and then still had a Butters contacting enforcement complaining about people starting before the posted hours. So then we got more specific and said, you can't even set... Put on the property prior to the work hours, because people are getting there early, setting up.
Passing up trucks.
And it was just inadvertently causing noise disturbance to a Butters. So we're doing our best to try and mitigate those impacts for the Butters.
Is this a general bylaw? Is it applicable to our conditions? Think we can add it?
Well, I think the intent is that there was some suggestion that the work hours that we put in our special permits may not be enforceable, because it's not reflected in the general bylaw. That being said, the board is eligible to provide reasonable restrictions for our special permits, so...
It's about enforcement.
Yeah.
That becomes the issue.
Yeah. A violation's a violation.
Yeah.
So a general standard of what the hours are, as well as noise. It's important.
And then the bylaw working group has been sort of going back through the nonconforming
section, doing a few tweaks to the language there, so you will notice, if you read the paper, that there's quite a substantial printing in the paper of all the bylaw changes, because all of those words have to be published. So that was at quite a substantial expense, but, you know, those...
Yeah.
The requirements, so...
Yeah. Well, that's good.
Yeah, that paper makes money.
That kind of goes under board updates, right? Anybody have any board updates?
No.
Future agenda items?
7 o'clock.
I know.
It says a record.
And it's a football night.
Oh, gee, oh, but Jesus.
It's a beautiful thing.
Hockey night soon enough.
Future agenda items, we have that workshop, so if anyone has any agenda, we can email them to you if we have anything.
Yeah, Thursday.
This is a deadline, too.
By Sunday.
Don't forget, if you have anything for us to discuss on...
Yeah, I do, but I'll bring it up later, because I still got to do some more legwork.
I did one update. I did one update, I'm sorry.